Good morning, welcome to the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners Boardwork Session. It's Wednesday, November 24th, 2021, 9:04 a.m. My name is Ty Mentor, Chair of the Board. To my left is the Vice Chair, Commissioner Gary Edwards. Commissioner Mejia, present through Zoom. County Manager, Miro Chavez, and Assistant County Manager, Robin Campbell here with us. We have a one-hour session connected to the topic of Budget Amendment Three Review. This meeting is live streamed on the Thurston County YouTube channel. And we have our budget team also on our Zoom platform. So I'll just turn it over to Assistant County Manager.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. Robin Campbell, Assistant County Manager. This morning, we're, as you said, going over the budget amendments. A few housekeeping items. First, this is titled Budget Amendment Three because we thought we had done Budget Amendment Two in September. But upon doing a little research, we discovered that that amendment never got onto a board agenda. You may recall that the first meeting in September was canceled. And so we pushed it forward to September 14th, and it did not get on that agenda. So even though this says Budget Amendment Three, it's really Budget Amendment Two. And the one and only item we were going to do in Budget Amendment Two was to give authority to the clerk's office to pay for LFO payments under Blake. And that is now included in this amendment. So really, it's Budget Amendment Two. Don't get hung up on the labels because we did not have time to go into the system. And we didn't want to introduce any errors by starting to change labels. So in the system, it says three, but it's really Amendment Two. And all of the legal documents will say Amendment Two. So there's that. I would also this morning like to introduce Jennifer Smith. Jennifer, just give us a wave. Jennifer is your new Senior Management Analyst. She will be stepping into the position that Denise Doty is leaving when she retires. And her last day with the county is December 7th. So you're very sad to see Denise leaving, but she's very excited about retirement. And we are very happy to welcome Jennifer to the team. So with that-
Welcome aboard, Jennifer.
Thank you.
Really glad to have her here. Okay, so jumping into the amendment, you have a few different items in your package. The first one we're going to look at is grants. Got the grant label on the top. And we'll just walk through these. And I'm going to say right now that it's been a few weeks since I've looked at these. And we've been doing a lot since the last time I reviewed. So I may be turning to staff to fill in the blanks. The first item is a request from Superior Court to add the funding we're receiving for the Safe Baby Coordinator. And these are grants. So what you see here is the amount of expenditure matches the revenue. These are really simple and straightforward. Item number two is Sheriff Law Enforcement. It's funding that they've received from the U.S. Marshal. Item number three is, in non-departmental, we are booking the entire amount of lost revenue replacement from the Recovery Act. So it's worth just under 2.5 million. It does not have direct expenditures associated with it. It is a replacement of lost revenue. You've seen it on the forecast, in every forecast I've given you for the last few months. You've already taken it into consideration when you made your spending assumptions for the upcoming biennium. So it's not new money available for you to spend. This is just getting it on the books. Questions about this?
Yeah, I do, but I don't know if I have the right questions or not. I mean, I just want to make sure everything is, I guess, okay. That's-
Absolutely.
And so if we were to itemize the expenditure block, I mean, it'd have a whole list of where the money went. Is that it?
Yes.
Exactly.
This can be spent for any legal reason.
Because this is, and this would come from the, you know, $56 million.
That's exactly right.
Transferred to where?
And maybe it's been spent already, all of it has been spent?
You have planned-
It's either got dedication or it's been spent. Is that what I'm hearing?
For the most part, is included on the preliminary 2022, 2023 budget. This current, it will be by the- So as you may recall, in that data sheet, she included lost revenue, which ended up going really as part of your overall revenue when you make decisions as to how you're going to allocate and fund it for the next two years. So you write that you're physical point. You see the revenue, the expenditures is in so many different items. It will be difficult to track because it became part of the general fund.
Commissioner Mejia, do you have a question about this piece?
I do not, thank you.
Okay.
All right.
Commissioner Mejia, feel free to just pipe up if you have a question.
The next three items are in public defense. And they are all grants that are for expenses that are already included in the budget. It's money we're getting from the State Office of Public Defense for expenses related to COVID response or for the Blake representation. The two Blake, so I'll do them one by one. Item number four is $50,000 from the Washington State Office of Public Defense for COVID response. Item number five is also from the State Office of Public Defense for Blake, efforts related to Blake. And then item number six is from the Office of Public Defense, also related to Blake. And this is revenue we're receiving this year for expenditures the board has already approved. It offsets some of our current expenses.
I do have a question on, let's say, if I went back to three just for a second. Under the title, it says, "Recording Lost Revenue Replacement for the..."
That's because the cell is just in, if, this is a technical item in Excel, the program we use to create the report. If the row was bigger, like the row above it, you'd see the rest of the language.
Okay. Then on these other ones, like for public defense now, but there's no expenditure associated. So is it expended or is it in-
It's already spent.
It's already spent.
Right. And the board appropriated the money in Amendment One for Blake.
I just, my only question is, how come we just don't say spent? You know, $69,277 spent. So it doesn't look like it's revenue waiting to be spent. I'm just, I don't know anything about bookkeeping.
We can say spent in the narrative.
Okay, that's suffice, okay.
Okay. Because if you show the number on the expenditure, then it will be dual expenditure.
We don't want any dual count.
That's what I, that's what, that's-
You'd be adding appropriation when you already have.
Okay, good enough.
This is what we're just recovering for already expenditures that occurred.
Okay.
I remember thinking at the time we were making those expenditures that, you know, we were calculating, like we were gambling a little bit. And I was pretty certain we were going to get some portion of this back, which made me feel like, okay, we can go ahead and allocate here because it's going to be at least partially filled, and here it is.
The revenue will come. And now it's starting to trickle in.
Right.
That's exactly right. Okay, so the last item on the list is Community Planning has received a grant for voluntary stewardship. Community Planning is able to bill out some of their current overhead costs in their grant. So it's a little more than the expenditure shown here. The expenditures are the direct increase that will be caused by the grant activity. So it's more revenue than it is expenditures. So overall, in the grant category, your total general fund increased revenue by 2.8 million and increased expenditures by 73,000.
But generally speaking, this is all, this all was known to us when we were making our budget decisions. This is just kind of doing the, doing the technical-
That's right.
-legal work to get it all.
If I made the bookkeeping.
The bookkeeping, yeah.
The bookkeeping.
Yep, it's the grant paid. This is the easy. The next few items are non-general fund. So item number eight is in your housing fund. We have received millions of dollars for the rental assistance program. Again, already known, this is the bookkeeping end of it. So there's $7 million coming from the Department of Commerce. And then item number nine on-
Before you-
Okay.
I'm still, I'm trying to clarify just so I can, I could explain this if I ever get asked, which hopefully I won't. But in, in seven, you know, we got 60,000 in revenue and 45,000 expenditure. And in eight, you know, we got 7 million, and 7 million expenditure. But I'm trying, I'm just trying to clarify then, like in public defense, we got 111, 786, but no expenditure. I mean, I'm just wondering how come it doesn't say 102,000 expenditure or something? I'm just trying to figure out the blank spots. How, why is it, not blank spots in some areas, but it's blank spots in other areas? And I know we've already spent it maybe, and we've already debated that. But now my question is, why? What's the difference?
Right. So if I were to show you these lists for Amendment One, you'd have a line for public defense that says blank expenditures with only a number in the expenditure column. Now that we know exactly what the grants are and we've received them, now we're filling in the revenue column. So the expenditure part was reflected in Amendment One. And when we say expenditure, it's not money spent, it's the authority to spend.
Okay, so it's committed.
Right. And you're telling offices and departments, here's how much you can spend. And if we think about budget laws, the law says that an office or department cannot spend more than their appropriation authority. So when we talk about expenses, it's setting their spending limit. And you've already raised their limit for this purpose in Amendment One.
Okay. Okay.
Oh, that's okay. This is important stuff. So line nine on page two, Public Health has received a grant.
I guess to answer the question, what's the difference on item eight? And now they have-
Oh, right.
Does a brand-new grant with a brand-new set of expenditures.
Okay.
Right. That we didn't know was coming in Amendment One. And then line nine, same. This is related to COVID, excuse me, to support the syringe exchange services. So any lingering questions about grants?
Number 10, sorry, can you do that one?
Oh, 10, that's right. This is the lost revenue coming. We've got to have expenditure authority to transfer the money out of the fiscal recovery fund. So Fund 1940.
Oh, okay.
So this is the companion line-
For three?
To line three.
Oh, yeah. Yep, I got you.
Let's see, technical and transfers next. They are exactly what they say they are. It's all just technical adjustments. So line one is copier for the prosecutor's office. Under accounting rules, we're required to book the expenditure. And we book the revenue at the same time because it's a net zero expense accounting requirement. Item number two is in community planning and development. And you'll see it's companion line on line seven. This is adjusting the budget for CPED to reflect the appropriate allocation of their indirect and overhead costs. So it's 57,000 more that should be charged to the land use fund upon analysis of their indirect expenses.
Does this have any connection with the budget item that about what they charge?
Nope.
It's a separate issue?
This is a completely separate thing. This is just examining all of their expenses and allocating the indirect appropriately over the right funds.
I thought it might be kind of an ancillary piece to them feeling that they had to shift, you know, we had to shift certain money to general fund.
No, this is, this is completely separate. This is due to a series of errors made in the original. And then Amendment Number One, we're correcting.
And it ends up reducing general fund impact.
It does.
That would be the opposite of-
Yeah, if it was going the other way, it would be a big concern. It's not a small concern because we do have concerns about the land use fund. But it's technical because you have to do it, it's cost allocation. Number three, we're getting into the non-general fund part. This is just increasing pass-through capacity. This is another one where the line should have been a little wider to show increased pass-through capacity for Thurston T-COM. The revenue for T-COM has been coming in at a much greater rate than anyone anticipated. So we're adjusting the expenditure authority to be able to pass-
Do what? I don't know if anyone's the right term, anyone suspected.
Oh, did you, have you forecasted?
I've been giving you a hard time about the bubble, you know?
You bet.
What he's saying is he was anticipating.
This crazy, huh? I'm telling you, we've never seen growth like this. But we need enough capacity to be able to pass through all of the revenue to T-COM.
Let me ask you something about that. Do we get any administrative kickback?
No.
No kickbacks.
Not, not, no.
You know how we sometimes skim a fund for interest?
Yes and no. We could not keep the interest for the T-COM fund.
Okay, just wondering.
But one of the things that we should have done is we should have held a small amount for our indirect costs because it does cost us something to monitor and-
Well, that's what I'm thinking, I mean, a little bit, I don't know.
We didn't. And that was, well, if you'd like to renegotiate the inter-local agreement for T-COM under which they separated-
More trouble than it's worth, is it?
Way more trouble than it's worth.
And we just had a brand-new local agreement just last year.
Okay.
That would have been the time, and it's just not worth it.
We're benevolent, that's cool.
Yep. Okay, item number four is, just yesterday, you took action or we reviewed, maybe it's coming next week, these funds that we need to re-establish a fund. We need to eliminate one fund and establish a different fund related to the bonds. Those are items four, five, six, eight, nine, and 10, is just the adjustments to the bonds. All technical. There's no new money coming in, there's no additional money going out.
Is that where, I remember Commissioner Mentor said that we needed to add a word there, create-
Yeah, create, create one fund and dissolve another.
That's the portion you're talking about.
So that's next week, or is-
Yeah, that's on the agenda for next week. And it's where Financial Services has told us that we really need a capital fund, not a internal service fund, and yeah. It's all that, totally technical. And then item seven again is related to item number two. That's everything on the technical list. Capital reappropriations. This entire list is for projects that you have already approved. The way the capital budget is approved is by project. So you approve an entire amount of a project's cost. And then the department, because the only two departments that have capital appropriation are Public Works and Central Services, either of those departments is given the authority in the budget document to shift the money between the years as necessary as long as they do not exceed the total cost of the project. And that's what this does. It's just shifting the money between the years so that the authority is there when they need it.
But a lot of these looks like are expenditure reductions.
They're spending less this year because they expect to spend more next year.
Oh, I see, so the 2022 is somewhere else.
Yep.
Yes, that's the nature of the project delivery, you know?
I mean, just to ask you.
That's a delay this year.
I'm sorry, remember, please.
Yeah, it's the nature of the project delivery. You know, Public Works assumes that probably they can get to a certain benchmark in the project this year. And you appropriated the expenditures to meet that. There's always delays in the project delivery. So, and most of the cases, they will not be able to spend what you authorized this year. That's where you see the reduction. But moving to the next year is where they, they're going to be spending. So it's more of a, it's more of a carryover type of scenario.
Right, but I'm, I just, my point was just that this carryover is really a two-step thing. This is half of it. And the other half is taking this amount of money and moving it into the 2022 budget.
Or 2023, or, right, it's moved forward.
Which has been being done-
Already taken care of in the-
Which is part of the control facilities conversation you were talking about.
Right. And these projects are already approved in total. So this, this document, the board doesn't even need to authorize this. This is, you've entered it in the system, this is for your information.
Commissioner, any questions?
Yeah, just on two and three, I mean, it almost looks like everything, you know, you're talking about two different funds. One is 3010, the other's 3190.
That's right.
But the verbiage is the same on everything all the way through.
That's right.
And is it just the fund difference? Is that what that's trying to account for?
Yes. Because appropriations are by fund.
Okay, and-
Well, because the piece- Well, because the piece is coming out of interact fees, probably. It's the same project.
Okay.
Yep, the only one that's different is the very last one, item number 16. And that is where we're actually moving money forward into this year because we are able to accomplish more this year than we anticipated.
Okay. Let's do this. I do want to.
Fixing the leaks. Yep. So, capital, just moving the money between years.
That's really all it is on everything, just.
It's all it is on every one of these.
They couldn't do the project because there was a snowstorm or whatever.
Or they couldn't get paint.
Yeah.
Or. And that was the big thing this year was the supply chain issues. Yeah, that, that put a, a kink in quite a few of our projects.
Okay.
Just, it's been a very interesting. It's like 2020 all over again with a different set of issues. So, the last item are the policy items. There are only a few for general fund.
Hold on one sec. Commissioner Mejia, you have any questions before we start policy?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Great. So, policy items. The first item is for the clerk. This is what we would have done in Amendment number two. Add money for the clerk to make those LFO refunds. We had no idea when we were preparing Amendment two, how much those would be. So, we were adding a million dollars upon, you know, with time and experience under our belt. This year, the clerk expects to spend less than 150,000. So, instead of adding a million, we're just going to add the 150,000. The revenue for this was already assumed in 2021. Item number.
Is that what you were expecting, Commissioner Metzger? The actual rate of expenditures of the LFOs will be much less than we were anticipating.
Yeah, I mean, it's just, I'm just.
Well, that discussion is going to roll into the next hour.
Commissioner Edwards always gets take credit for his sales tax predictions. I'm taking credit for this one now. I told you guys.
All right. Item number two is the sheriff's law enforcement. The sheriff is asking to have, this is related to the purchase of the drone.
This one's pretty simple, it looks like. I don't think we need to, we spent a lot of time on it. He did get, turned it back in, got a better deal, bought one for cheaper.
The refund is revenue. So, this has a technical aspect when it comes to the revenue that I quite seriously never quite got. Olivia could probably explain it.
Yeah, so it's just, it's just, it's just technical. It's because they returned this in 2020. If they would have returned this in 21, we would have been allowed to net everything together. But because they couldn't, it doesn't count as a refund, so we count it as revenue. And then they have to repurchase their expenditure. So, if it was the same year, it would wash, you would never see it.
All right, thank you, Olivia. So, it's kind of technical, and there's revenue to cover the expense. And then the last item is the commitment that the board has made to the coroner for 280,000 to cover unanticipated autopsy costs.
I do have a question about that.
Yes, sir.
Did, did we spend any money? I mean, it says come out of general fund, but what about the possibility of some of that being directly related to the COVID activities?
So, we've looked at the type of work that it is, and we cannot claim it.
Find anything in there, can't get a stretch out of it?
Not, not for the autopsies.
Okay.
We are paying the coroner's some of their PPE. Any PPE that it's above and beyond what they would normally have, we, we are paying with ARCA money. And then the lab fees that St. Peter's Hospital has charged the coroner to do COVID tests on bodies.
Yeah.
We are paying those out of the ARCA funds.
But even for this extra funding, if the death certificate has anything to do with COVID on it, why couldn't we do the autopsy out of that other fund so we don't drain the general fund?
Yeah, because the autopsy itself is not COVID-related work.
Well, it is if the person died from it, I'd say. Well, I mean, I think that, I don't think that's too.
I see your, your logic, but.
That is, that is a good thought.
I mean, why can't, why can't we do that?
Um, and that certificate is for somebody who has been affected by COVID. And that certificate usually doesn't send due to COVID. It is due to respiratory illness.
There's a reimbursement with the hospitals and stuff. They've been putting COVID on a lot of death certificates that maybe there's some underlying things, but it still says COVID. So, I think we ought to take advantage of it as well and quit draining our general fund every time if we can take it out of another fund.
You know that lost revenue money? You can say that you're using part of that to cover it.
Oh, okay, well, then that makes it a little more. Makes it better, I guess, I mean, I want to get some.
It's not really.
What is the, I mean, can you explain the, like, why is there 98,000 revenue? What's that part of that fund is?
So, we get a small portion of our autopsy costs reimbursed by the state of Washington.
Okay.
So, we'll point.
So, the more we rack up, what else continue to rise by?
Is it percentage?
But it's not a one-to-one. They don't reimburse the entire cost.
I see, so this is really costing us like 190, because we wouldn't have this without this extra 205.
That's exactly.
So, this is costing us 190.
In net.
That could pay for his pathologist or whatever, you know. I, I don't know, I just, I like to get it when we can to protect the general fund because that's our biggest problem.
That is, that is my common, my. I always stay aware of that, this term, mitigate where we can.
That doesn't, yeah, I mean, that doesn't seem as much of a stretch as some of your ideas.
I'll accept that.
Okay. That's all the general fund items. So, turning to page two, we start looking at other funds. The first one is for Medic One. Actually, quite a few of these are Medic One related to COVID. And they're broken up because the activities are a little different. The first is operating costs where we're going to receive eventually the reimbursement from FEMA and Department of Health. That's lines one and two. And we experienced an unanticipated and fairly high amount of paramedic disability costs, 331,000 in paramedic disability costs that were COVID-related. 130,000 in COVID supplies and PPE for our Medic One partners. And then 21,000 for vaccination clinic expenses to support the vaccination clinics. Line six.
I have a question.
Oh, yes, yes.
Why wouldn't that be covered by, why wouldn't there be a revenue on that since it's covered by COVID, I'm guessing?
Do you see the revenue on line five?
So, that's, so four and five are connected?
Yep, four and five are connected. And then I'm going to have to check these others because we are going to cover all of these with ARCA money. If not, if we can't claim it from FEMA. We're going to start by trying to get the money from FEMA.
Okay.
So, then five is the high probability units. You may recall that you added additional funding for, it was for extra help, wasn't it? To provide additional services and reduce the wait time that's been caused by people having to stay at the hospital until there's a bed. So, that is line six. Line seven is going to be 75,000 for contractual costs with the fire agencies. Also related to COVID. Oh, these are non-COVID, pardon me, these are non-COVID costs. Just the cost of doing businesses going up. Again, related to disability, but not necessarily related to the pandemic. And if you want more information about this, please give me the questions, and I will pass them on to Kurt and get good explanations. Line number eight is for parks. This is funding is going to come from REIT and from the park impact fees. And you see those entries on, here's line 12. Nine and 12, not nine. Yeah, 12 and 13 are related to line eight. They're the transfers of money into the Parks Fund to be able to increase the money available for this project. Line nine is the, this is actually a technical item. It's adding the funding that the board approved for the Boston Harbor and Tam O Shan Utility Systems Studies that are being paid by ARCA. The pre-design work. Lines 10 and 11 are the treasurer. This is correcting a debt. It's also a technical item. Line 14 is the increase in tipping fees. That's the revenue side. We're getting quite a bit more in tipping fees. And it's because we are handling a lot more waste. And to be able to handle that volume, we need to increase the amount that we are paying to the contractor. So, the 1.8 million increase in contractual costs are to handle all the stuff that's coming in that's generating that revenue, basically. Line number.
I, I really don't understand that. Could you? I mean, that's as clear as my.
You've got more, line 14?
Yeah.
You've got more trash coming in. So, that's generating a lot more revenue. But you need that much more trash handled. So, that's increasing the cost to handle the trash.
So, we actually, what, made half a million dollars on it or something?
Yes. Yes, because solid waste is a cash cow.
It is. The more garbage that we process, refuse that we process, the tipping fee is obviously going with it. And the disposal, because we have to pay for more tonnage that we process after we collect. And, and the tipping fees always generate decent amount of revenue.
So, this isn't free revenue. We'll spend it in other areas eventually to maintain the plant. Yeah, system-wide, we'll need the, the money. And we have to leave it in the solid waste fund. We can't.
It's dedicated money.
It is restricted money, yes. But, but that's the bottom line there, more, more trash. Line number 15 is the ARCA funding for these utility projects. And the same for 18, we're just, so what you see in line, to, to tie it up with a bow, line nine is the money going into, it becomes the revenue on lines 15 and 16. And then the expenditure authority out of those funds to do the pre-design work. And then line 17 in human resources is the increase to the risk fund to pay out the additional insurance premium and defense costs through the year that are higher than we had anticipated. But the money is available in the fund balance to do that. And that is the amendment.
I, I have one question that is not necessarily related to this, but it's. Are we still doing our unemployment fund?
Oh, yes.
And so if somebody gets laid off, that becomes our problem?
Yes.
Do those employees that may get laid off or maybe have been laid off because of the COVID thing, do they get compensation from our unemployment fund?
The county has not laid off anybody due to COVID. Nobody got laid off.
Oh, oh, okay, okay.
As far as I know, nobody has been laid off.
Okay, but, Margaret, I guess, we'll talk about that at a later time.
If an employee has chosen to leave county employment for whatever reason, including COVID, they would not be eligible for unemployment.
Because they chose.
Because they chose to separate.
Okay, but if they get a termination letter, what happens?
If we terminate them for not complying with county policies, they are not eligible for unemployment.
Okay. But there's more to come later.
Only, only one.
So far.
It's only been one.
Okay.
Okay, go.
Okay.
Can you remind me about the, so, the, I'm going back to the autopsy cause for the coroner. So, this is kind of backfilling what happened in 2021. Can you remind me what we did for 2022 in terms of, I know the coroner had requested this, that, or the other, either more of, I think there was an alternative proposal, either you give me more budget because, because they're coming in faster or some kind of employee, I don't remember the exact.
The board authorized the employee.
Okay, we did it.
Yes.
Yep, I'm remembering it now, I just wanted to.
Yeah.
I knew there was an, I knew there was a going-forward issue, not just a 2021 issue.
You recall very well, the, the options of continuing to increase the amount of autopsy funding up at, atologists. And, and the board at this point is preliminary decisions, you're fine, end up.
And so hopefully, with that expenditure, we won't see something like this next year because he's got the in-house capacity to get the work done.
Right, he doesn't have to pay.
Okay.
Yes. Okay, any other questions about the amendment?
Amendment two instead of amendment.
Yeah.
That's what I got, that's what I got.
Amendment two, and we end up. Because the lost revenue.
I, I, this is a good example of, I don't expect any of us are too capable of doing what you're doing, and we have to take it in for it, basically. And I suppose you're meeting the requirement of the law by explaining this to us, whether, whether it sinks in or not.
I, I am meeting requirements of the law. I, I am meeting requirements of the law, um, but.
Part of the bureaucratic process, I told.
I'm also, you know, only the board can authorize expenses, so.
And you've explained it to us.
I want you to know what you're doing and have a, an ample opportunity to ask questions.
Okay.
I remember twenty nineteen budget amendment one was just a backbreaker.
Yes.
It was like a hundred and something policy request or something, I just, maybe I'm, maybe I've expanded it in my mind, but I just remember thinking, this can't be how it is every amendment, and it hasn't been.
No.
I don't know what it was about that amendment.
Um, I think that there was uh very little control going on at that time, and some offices and departments saw an opportunity, uh, and you may recall that after that amendment, um, we, I also gave you a presentation that said the amendments are out of control and we need to get them back in line, and that's what we did.
So we adopted some guidelines, yeah, okay, well, good. This, this shows the fruit of that.
Yeah.
Because this is not, you know, this is manageable.
This is manageable, and, and this amendment also reflects offices and departments doing a very good job of managing what they have.
Yeah, I've definitely, I can see in my three years, this is, very much reflects that, so I appreciate all that work by the different offices.
Yep, me too. Okay.
Are, are we going into another budget information at ten?
In ten minutes, we're gonna talk about next biennium's budget and the uh.
Short calls.
Yep, that is exactly.
The short session.
Okay.
I need to get my budget signed.
Okay, I just wanted to.
Yes, but I have a plan to offer you.
Is this session complete, though?
This, unless you have additional questions about the amendment, this one's a wrap.
And we'll tell what difference you.
Okay, so we're gonna adjourn this morning work session, we have another work session at ten AM regarding uh a, a different budget topic, and we'll pick that up here in about ten minutes, thank you.
Thank you, we'll on the next one.